Okay, we're good, Dave.
All right, webinar started.
Good evening and welcome to the February 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. We had some technical difficulties which delayed our start. We did have an executive session before the meeting to discuss personnel and legal matters. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Leva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis. Did we lose him? He was here a second ago.
He's muted.
Here.
There he is, very good. Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
And Dr. Hart.
Here.
All right, Chief, would you lead us in the pledge? For the readers, by the United States of America, to the Republic for which is the one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Citizens Forum, 20 minutes for registered speakers. I will read the comments. The first comment is from Ryan Crowe at 504 Sagamore Road. "I live directly across Sagamore Road from the Brookline School. As such, I have several comments and questions regarding the demolition of the school. Number one, will public input or review be solicited in the selection of the demolition contractor? Although the asbestos has been remediated, the Brookline School almost certainly contains lead paint and other hazardous materials. How will the township ensure the demolition is safe for nearby residents and leaves the site uncontaminated for future use? Number three, will the RFP/RFQ require the contractor to fully remediate the site, i.e. fill in the hole, plant grass, etc., even if the ultimate use of the lot remains undetermined at the time of the demolition? And finally, number four, will the ultimate contract for the demolition include performance-based fee payments or other incentives to encourage timely, safe completion of the work?" The next comment is from Tony Morinelli at Hartford Hall. "Gentlemen, any thought to demolish the Brookline School is unconscionable. The Brookline School stands as a monument to the very history of Brookline and its creation as one of the first planned communities. Its stones exemplify the American colonial revival architecture of the early 20th centuries. Its halls educate on almost 100 years of Brookline's children. It is the alma mater, the nourishing mother of this entire Brookline community. It is our past, our present, and must continue into the future. This current body of commissioners, however, is transitory. It has no right to demolish what has stood long before their time and beyond their collective ken. Any such destructive notion is short-sighted and ill-informed. Attributing the inability to repurpose the school to technical regulations is a specious argument at best. Legal regulations are not determined by natural law. They are human constructions and, as such, can be altered and replaced. To alter the prohibiting regulations requires only thoughtfulness and willingness to execute such modifications. The greatest error by this commission was not to move the library to the Brookline School and, along with the library, to create a community center that would accommodate surrey and spaces for any number of much-needed public services. Indeed, spending funds on the current library with its unalterable faults underscores the same lack of long-term vision that proposes the demolition of the Brookline School. This commission is not the owner of the Brookline School. The Brookline School and its history is in this commission's trust. As such, this commission is under the obligations of stewardship. Furthermore, and in the same vein, few of the board were born and raised here or have families who have lived here for more than one generation. Thus, there is little, if any, generational community memory. Without a community foresight founded on a collective knowledge of the past, no decision to demolish that past can be morally and ethically justified." Tony Morinelli. Next letter is from Barbara Marinelli, who is the chairman, Heritage Commission of Delaware County. "Your Commissioner Hart, the Heritage Commission of Delaware County was extremely distressed to hear of the potential demolition of the historic Brookline School in Haverford Township. The Heritage Commission was established to oversee the rich heritage of Delaware County and advise on projects regarding historic buildings. The Brookline School is one of the last stone elementary schools left in the township and was built to last. It does need some rehabilitation work, but by adaptively reusing the building, it can be brought into new life and even pay for itself over time. We understand there is a committee that has been exploring different options for its reuse. There are a number of former schools throughout the county that have been successfully adapted to community use, most recently the Roosevelt School in Middletown Township. We urge you to delay voting on demolition until all options are explored as its potential reuse and rehabilitation. It can be a fantastic community asset through its reuse as well as retaining Haverford Township's built heritage. There is funding available for rehabilitation projects on historic buildings, and the Heritage Commission can help advise on different options for reuse and funding. Once the building is gone, it cannot be replaced, and the gradual demolition of its historic buildings in the township and the county is deteriorating our shared heritage and sense of community. With regards, Barbara Marinelli." Next comment is from Susan Beraldi. I don't have an address. "Hello, my question for the Board of Commissioners is, considering that the deed transfer of the Brookline School from the school district to the township contained a reverter clause, which PA state law requires whenever school district transfers one of its properties to a township, that property must be returned to the school district in the event it is not going to be used for a public purpose. How can the township plan to destroy the Brookline School be justified when the township has no public purpose planned for the property?" The next comment is from Tom Lipko. Again, I do not have an address. "Regarding the proposed demolition of the Brookline School, although the entire building cannot be pragmatically saved, I suggest setting aside some of the facade stones and perhaps the blocks with the school's name to construct a planter or other municipal fixture to commemorate the school's history." The next comment is from Rebecca Timmy, 1201 Edgewood Road. "In an email on Sunday, February 7, 2021, 8th Ward Commissioner Jerry Hart wrote of the Brookline School that the Haverford Township took over position of the school district in 2018 after learning of the district's plan to sell the site. At the time, the state of the Brookline School had deteriorated due to decades of neglect. The poor condition of the Brookline School was a direct result of decisions and reluctance to maintain the property by the school district. Now, two years later, the township has been prevented from moving forward on a promising opportunity to repurpose the Brookline School due to a reverter clause that stipulates the property to be returned to the school district in the event that it is not going to be used for a public purpose. The promising opportunity to preserve the building was to solicit bids from private developers for possible conversion to apartments, as was done with the Lanark School. Given the facts, I believe there are two paths forward. Number one, return Brookline School to the school district as stipulated in the clause and encourage the school district to sell the site excluding fields as originally intended. Sale of the site would generate revenue for taxpayers and the school district alike. A private developer estimated Brookline property value at $1.75 million. Lanark School sold for $442,000 in 2015. It would also preserve an historic impressive building in our township. It would provide a use from which the community benefits, apartment housing, possibly daycare, aftercare, extended care option to half-day kindergarten if the school district were to put such contingencies on the sale. Keep beloved fields for community access, maintain the fabric of the neighborhood, and restore the site to its once attractive state. It would also generate new tax revenue to the township for years to come. Option two is to demolish the building. Demolition would incur a significant expense of $500,000, including the asbestos removal already completed, a cost entirely absorbed by the taxpayers and the township, and also result in the loss of a historic and impressive building in our township. Why not agree with the school district to reconsider the Brookline School and sell the property as an asset which represents a financial gain for the community, where at very least, request that the school district share the burden for the cost of demolition? Ultimately, it was the school district's responsibility through decades of neglect that resulted in deterioration of the site. Therefore, the school district should bear a portion of the cost of demolition. Most sincerely, Rebecca Timmy." Several more. The next comment is from Colette Bannon, 334 Sagamore. "Dear members of the Board of Commissioners, I am writing to urge a reconsideration of the vote to bid on the demolition of the Brookline School on Arlington Road. There are many reasons to save the building, but the most important one right now is one of money and taxpayer savings. The township will lose out on millions of potential dollars if we do not take developers up on their interest in turning the building into lucrative apartments. There's a hot market right now for these type of buildings for adaptive reuse. Many developers have expressed interest, and one gave a rough ballpark of the building alone being worth $1.7 million. The millennials this township needs to attract are accustomed to living in and frequenting such sites in the city. It appears the choices are, A, the township could elect to go back to the original transfer agreement with the school district and renegotiate it to allow for subdividing the parcel with the developer taking over the building and the township retaining the fields for open or park space; or B, have the ownership of the entire property revert back to the school district. The township has no obvious public use for the site now that it has decided not to build a library there. And the school district could be beneficiary of such a lucrative sale. There are many community uses that are needed in the township right now, the most dire of which is daycare and aftercare. It's unfortunate that the board does not intend to address these needs right now, but understandable that perhaps we let the school district either pursue them or financially benefit from such a sale after disruptive year we have had. I also want to comment that the ad hoc committee established last year to come up with some alternatives to demolition has also been affected by this disruptive year. This year has not been ideal for holding committee meetings, doing any kind of research with the state, or holding meetings with other stakeholders in the community. The committee was only able to meet four times and understandably preferred to meet for short periods of time. Even so, we came up with a number of possible solutions, the most viable of which appeared to be the sale of the building to a developer who would value it. Other options considered were turning the building over to an already existing nonprofit entity for community use or establishing a new township-sponsored nonprofit to find grant funding to manage the building for community use. It was a shock that after such a short amount of work time, a bid for demolition is so close at hand. Yes, the building has been neglected for decades and continues to deteriorate. It doesn't help that it is now used for practice by fire and police. Boards and windows have been put up the last couple of months, making it even more of an eyesore, but the entire neighborhood will be affected by the building's absence. The alteration of view sheds and increased noise pollution. Without a buffer along busy Arlington Road, users of the field will feel far more exposed. Other neighboring township and private developers see worth in local historic architectural and cultural fabric. Can't this board do the same? Colette Bannon." Next comment is from John Oriente, 620 East Manoa Road. "Since I have a lot of love and respect for old buildings such as this, I have followed for years the township's dilemma over this issue. I like to think outside the box, so I'm going to throw out at you, for what it's worth, what I consider to be an unusual suggestion. I'll be as brief as possible. Why not demolish just the inside of the building but save the four walls, which is where the true beauty of the building exists, and possibly save the roof as well, if that's in reasonably good shape? So, of course, the next question would be, what are we to do with four beautiful walls with nothing inside? Quite possibly a lot, I believe. A few ideas and pluses could have our farm market inside those four walls, plenty of room for that function. Could use it for some of the township concerts and festivals, such as the Italian Festival, which I believe was last held on the parking lot at St. Dennis Church on Eagle Road. Virtually any outdoor event could be held there. It would definitely be unique, being able to walk into an old historic building and yet still be outside, so to speak. The possibilities would be limited only by one's imagination. The site could even be rented out for weddings, parties, etc., and help make additional money for the township. Maintenance costs would be low. I've spoken to a few residents about my thoughts on this, and they agree with me and think that it would be an enhancement to the community. And then there's something you can't put a price on, the fact that it would be a conversation piece, something unique and one-of-a-kind in Haverford Township. New York might have the Statue of Liberty, and Philly might have the Liberty Bell, and Paris might have Eiffel Tower, but Haverton would have Brookline Four Walls. This would keep a lot of township residents happy, those who have expressed a desire to save this historic building while at the same time sparing the township the exorbitant expense of having to spend millions on renovations and bringing it up to code. This promotes the township's past and, at the same time, moves it ahead with a future idea that could benefit most of the township residents. One other quick thought, I'm very proud of the township's parks and recreation, but to the best of my knowledge, I don't think there's a bocce court anywhere that I know of. Why not put a bocce court on the outside of Brookline Four Walls? The game of bocce has seen a resurgence over the last decade. I've been an avid bocce player for years and can attest to the fact that bocce attracts people of all ages. It's very intergenerational, quickly learned, and just plain fun." And the last comment is from Susanna Baruko, 805 Clifford Avenue in Ardmore. "Honorable Commissioners, I am once again urging you to think creatively about the future of the Brookline School. I participated in the Brookline School Ad Hoc Committee, which met monthly from June to October 2020, to discuss options for occupancy and use of the school. It was not until the Board of Commissioners meeting last week, however, that I learned of the reverter clause in the contract between the school district and the township signed in 2018. I understand the challenge presented by the reverter clause, but I still believe there may be options for preservation and adaptive reuse of the Brookline School. Radnor Township faced a similar situation trying to preserve a township-owned mansion house called The Willows. Radnor Township solicited an RFP for a public-private partnership use for the site to maintain public use and access. That effort didn't yield a use, but it raised and renewed awareness of the importance of the resource to the township and the residents. Today, The Willows is being restored through a public-private partnership. I am not saying this is an exact blueprint for the Brookline School, but it's an example of creative thinking and a commitment to finding a solution. Number two, seek an agreement with the school district that the school would revert back to the district through the reverter clause, with the understanding that the township will purchase school outright. The township could purchase the school and then sell it to a private developer. The school district could also sell the school to a 501(c)(3), such as a Preservation Alliance of Greater Philadelphia or Lower Marion Conservancy, as a pass-through to the township. The school code does not require that the deed from the township to a 503(c) entity include a reverter clause. Returning the Brookline School to use can only benefit the township by generating tax revenue, providing a use to benefit the community. Senior housing has been identified as a real need in the township and maintaining the historic character of the Brookline community. Abolishing the building will cost the township $500,000, remove a protective barrier to the fields behind the school, diminish the historic character of the Brookline School. Number three, mothball the building until the comprehensive planning process is completed. And number four, mothball the building until a plan for the site is approved. More times than not, historic buildings are demolished and conceptual plans are never realized. At the very least, township residents and neighbors of the Brookline School deserve something more than a vacant lot, as the potential to have a negative impact on the neighborhood, character, and value." Thank you, Susanna Baruko. I think the first question, comment from the resident on Sagamore, I hope Mr. Pernoni answer.
Sure. Did everybody hear me okay?
Sure.
So, the first question was, would input be solicited in the selection process of the demolition contractor? As a township, we have to publicly bid all our projects, so there will be bid documents prepared, the bid documents will be available through PennBid, which is a bidding service, and we keep a hard copy of the township building. So, if anybody wanted to come in and look at the bid documents prior to the bid documents being opened, they could access them through PennBid or coming into township and look at them. Once a bids are received, as the board knows, we are responsible to award to the lowest responsible bidder. And prior to the award of any bid, we, Pernoni, will tabulate the bids and check the references of the bidder. We also typically put in a clause, an experience clause, for a project of this type. Second question is, the asbestos has been remediated. The Brookline School almost certainly contains lead paint and other hazardous materials. How will the township ensure demolition is safe for the nearby residents? Very good point by Mr. Crowe. Yes, the building contains lead. The ACM, the asbestos-containing materials, were remediated and removed. An underground storage tank was removed. The lead paint, we don't pull off of wood before we demo a building, but the building does get demoed in accordance with OSHA and EPA regulations, and dust has to be, it will be controlled. And prior to the disposal, the demo itself gets tested to confirm that it is what it's expected to be, and then there's a manifest generated as to where the material was disposed of, and that manifest comes back to Haverford Township. Will the RFQ/RFP, it actually bid document, require the contractor to fully remediate the site, i.e. fill in the hole, plant grass, etc.? The answer is yes. Once the building's demolished, the basement will be backfilled, the parking lot will be removed, and the site will be graded and seeded. Will the ultimate contract for demolition include performance-based fee payments and other incentives for timely completion of work? Another good question, when we're a township and we bid work and we award a contract, the performance bond and a labor materials bond is required from the contractor, and we're also required to release progress payments. Those payments are for work that's being completed, not for work that's going to be completed. And we have typically had liquidated damages in a contract of this type, which puts a hard completion date on a contract. And to just put things in perspective, the previous time we bid the job, we had a 90-day duration for the contract. So, we'll have a duration somewhere between 60 and 90 days. Couple last things, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, a couple quick ones. During construction, the site will be fenced, the fence will be locked. We are planning on saving building facade material. The previous time we put the job, excuse me, on the street, we had required 4,000 square foot of material to be removed, building facade material and stored. We could certainly change that quantity if the board or staff feels that we could adjust that. Noise ordinance exists, so if there's any concerns about noise, it has to stay below the noise ordinance, and we have a work ordinance where nobody can start earlier than 8:00 a.m. Hopefully, that answered all the questions.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Just a few comments, I think, and we probably discussed this later when we get to the vote, but the, one of the comments was whether we're going to use it for a community use. Certainly, a community park qualifies as a community use. Also, in regard to some of Mr. Morinelli's comment, it's a state law, the reverter clause. It's really not something that we can ignore so that we are, have to abide by that law. It's not something we can choose not to follow. I don't know if any other commissioners want to comment now or comment later. Okay, if there's no objections, I wanted to move item number four up in front of the presentations. Can I have a motion to move?
I will make a mo-
Police Department. Oh, Civil Service. Yes, number five, I'm sorry. A motion to move.
Five up, yeah.
You want to make the motion?
Yes.
I'll make a, Mr. President, may I make a motion to move the Civil Service Commission lieutenant promotion up before the presentations?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you for your patience, we appreciate it.
Okay, due to a recent retirement of one of our lieutenants, this has naturally created a vacancy for the position of lieutenant. Therefore, I'll read from a previous certified list, which was approved by the board in February of 2019. We have two names. First place is Eugene Dolan, and second place was Dennis Donley. Now, the board will make their nomination and engage in a formal vote.
Mr. Chairman, can you make a motion to appoint Gene Dolan as lieutenant for Haverford Township Police Department?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Mr. Dolan.
Mr. Leva.
Mr. Dolan.
Mr. McCloskey.
Mr. Dolan.
Mr. Siegel.
Officer Dolan.
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Dolan.
Mr. Holmes.
Sergeant Dolan.
Mr. Wexler.
Sergeant Dolan.
Mr. Quinn.
Gene Dolan.
Dr. Hart.
Sergeant Dolan.
Lieutenant Dolan, congratulations. Lieutenant Dolan was hired by the Police Department in the year 2003 and spent- Lieutenant Dolan was hired by the police department in the year 2003 and spent seven years as a patrol officer. Gene then became the juvenile detective for two and a half years until he got promoted to sergeant in 2012. Gene spent seven years as a patrol sergeant and then took over the duty as the accreditation manager. As accreditation manager, Gene worked extremely hard in getting the department approved to be accredited police department in the state of Pennsylvania. Gene has been a member of the SWAT team, firearms instructor, honor guard member, and teaches in his spare time to Temple Police Academy. Gene has a graduate degree in criminal justice from Villanova University. Gene, congratulations. Good job. Chairman, thank you all for being here to support Gene. Janet, thank you very much, as usual. Commissioners, thank you.
And I'd like to thank the board for the consideration and the Civil Service Commission. They're always pleased to serve the board.
Look at your hair. I wish I had that. You can't wear that kid.
It's a long time ago, Steve.
Wait. I'll take what you have, put it on my head. I need something. Mom.
Okay, the next item on the agenda are presentations. The first one is about the Haverford Township Adult School. Marcia Wicker, president, and Stephanie Ainge-Hahn, vice president. You're muted.
There you go.
Okay. I'm not sure how to get the presentation up, Stephanie.
Okay, do you want me to share it?
Could you do that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, good evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak with you tonight. I'm Marcia Wicker, president of the Haverford Township Adult School, and with me is Stephanie Han, our vice president. The next slide. As most of you probably know-
It looks like the screen sharing is disabled. Sorry, Marcia.
How do I do this?
Thank you.
As most of you probably know, the Haverford Township Adult School, HTAS, has been offering two 10-week semesters a year, fall and spring, for over 60 years, since 1957. For the adults of our community and neighboring communities, we strive to offer a variety of interesting, inexpensive, quality courses. Over the years, we have moved from courses offered two nights a week in two buildings to offering up to seven days a week in multiple locations. And now, in response to the pandemic, we have moved to virtual learning via Zoom and socially-distanced in-person options to meet our students' interests. We are a nonprofit, independent organization with a volunteer board, and we have enjoyed a long, beneficial relationship with the school district, who provides us with office space, enabling us to have walk-in registrations in normal times and rents us classroom and gym space, also in normal times, at very reasonable rates. But like the rest of the world, we have been hard hit by the pandemic. And like the rest of the world, things look different now. But we are still here for our students. In normal times, we offer about 100 courses a semester, run 80 to 85 of them with 800 to 950 students, bring in $28,000 to $32,000 in tuition revenue, and mail 26,000 brochures to Havertown residents and current students from other communities. The pandemic shut down our 2020 spring semester after only two or three weeks. With schools closed, we came back in fall 2020 and now spring 2021 with virtual classes and a few socially-distanced class offerings, no mailed or printed brochure, no public walk-in registration, and current revenue of minus $10,000. We off- This is not on the slide, but if you look at the green one of what it used to be under normal conditions, instead of offering 100 courses, we now offer about 40 courses. Instead of running 80 to 85, we now run about an average of 20 courses. And instead of 800 to 950 students, we have 100 students each semester. We've cut our expenses by doing away with the brochure mailing and printing, and we have about $26,000 in outstanding credits for courses, much of that from the abbreviated semester last spring at the beginning of the pandemic. We are, whoops, we are, whoops, I'm going the wrong way. Help, Stephanie.
You're good.
And now I'm four pa- I'm four slides past. I want to go back. Well, Stephanie made a beautiful presentation, but we are still here to serve our community. And in our tradition of offering free courses for community enrichment, we offered free Zoom training on Zoom, of course, for instructors and students in the fall and again in the spring. Stephanie led the committee to transition us to virtual and ran the two online training sessions very successfully. Last Thursday, we offered a free course on resources to help families cope with mental illness. In person, we, most of you are familiar with some of our long-running community enrichment courses, the Havertown Coristers, which has been in effect for over 25 years and has offered fall and spring concerts, and the Social Skills for Developmentally Disabled Adults. And we hope that someday we'll be able to go back to those in-person classes also. A sampling of our recent long-term offerings include drawing, film courses, Tai Chi, yoga, Pilates. And we've attracted a loyal following for our history courses on a variety of topics, from the Civil War to Irish history and Washington's generals. We also have a loyal following for our language courses. We offer Spanish and Italian at several, several levels, from beginning to advanced in normal times. These are some of our longtime favorites, like guitar and aqua aerobics, which is held at the quadrangle, and crochet, but these courses may have to wait until we're back in person because they work better that way. We want to continue to be a part of the Haverford Township community. We would appreciate any support you could give us in terms of publicizing our courses, steering us toward any possible resources that might be available to us. And in your spare time, sign up for one of our courses and encourage your friends and neighbors to do so as well. We're also always looking for new board members, new course ideas, and new instructors. Thank you for your attention, and we hope you'll continue to learn, grow, and connect with HTAS.
Thank you very much. I'm personally a longtime user of the Wednesday night basketball in the adult school and currently taking your Spanish class, so it's certainly a valuable resource.
That's nice to hear. And the basketball people are among our biggest fans. You want us to be back in the buildings as soon as we can be.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation is brought by Brian Barrett, Parks and Recreation, in regard to township fields and lights.
Dave, you want to allow me to share my screen? I can't hear you.
I should have taken that Learn Zoom class from the- Brian, you're just going to have to wing it for the moment.
Okay, that's fine. So last, the last board meeting at the work session earlier, there was questions as to what fields we have lights on. And I had sent the commissioners a list of fields that we currently have lights on. There's basically three fields in the township that have lights on them. Genther Field, which is down on Glendale Road, which is used for baseball and softball and used for Brookline Baseball. That's the organization that utilizes it. The Haverford Reserve, we have the combination field that's used for baseball and used also for soccer, lacrosse, and football. That field, I say combination field, you can't play one of the field sports and baseball at the same time because the way the field's configured. So if baseball's there, you can only have a practice down at one end for the soccer, lacrosse, and football. And if soccer, lacrosse, and football are having a game, you really can't play baseball there at the same time. And then the last field with game lighting on it is the Haverford Reserve Softball Field. Now, there's three other fields in town that have practice lights on them. Those fields are Merwood, Grange, and McDonald Field, and they're used for youth football in the fall. And also at McDonald Field, it's also used for Haverford Soccer, for practices, training, that type of thing. But you couldn't play games under those lights because they were just put out there to extend daylight during the fall for practices. And then there's about six, six courts in town that either have tennis. Tennis at Elwell and Murray Place both have lights on them. And then there are basketball courts at Preston, Bailey, Veterans, and Cooper Town also have lights on them. And then ultimately, when the lights projected Veterans Field is finished, that'll be the fourth venue that'll have game lighting. And that game lighting will allow games for both football, softball, and baseball. If you're playing football, you couldn't play softball and baseball. You could play softball and baseball at the same time, though. So that's basically where we are with field lighting at the current time.
Any questions for-
President.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Barrett. Genther Field, is that limited to baseball?
There's baseball and softball there.
Any other sports?
We don't, we don't, we don't permit it out for any other sports on those fields now.
Are there any other organizations besides Brookline Baseball that uses Genther?
Yes, occasionally, the high school will have a softball game there, either in the afternoon or like maybe once or twice a year, an evening game.
Did the township pay for the lights at Genther Field?
For the electricity, yes.
They, who installed the lights themselves?
The lights were installed, basically, Westgate Baseball at the time. Because when it was first built, it was for Westgate. And Westgate combined with Brookline about four or five years ago, six years ago. But they raised some of their own money, they got some poles donated, they got electrical work donated. So most of the lighting down there was taken care of by the user group.
And the maintenance of them is the township and the electricity? We provide the electricity?
Yeah, at this point, at least during my tenure, it's been limited maintenance.
The Haverford Reserve baseball turf, that's part of the multi-turf field or is there dedicated baseball?
No, it's part of the multi-turf. So you couldn't play baseball game with a football, soccer, or lacrosse game same time.
But it's used by multiple sports?
Yes, it's used by all four of those sports. You know, different times. In the spring, you have basically three main users. Haverford Township Baseball League, Haverford Soccer, and Blaze Lacrosse. Actually, the recreation department runs a girls', beginner girls' lacrosse program there on Saturday mornings and Friday evenings. So there's actually five groups there.
Is HTBL, is that all the groups or is that one particular league?
Yeah, that's, well, that's the, basically about, I don't know the timeline, but 10, 15 years ago, there was one, the older kids went into one league. So anybody over the age of 14 went into what they call Haverford Township Baseball League.
And Brian, I think, are they there two nights a week? Is that-
Yes, they're there two nights a week and Saturdays.
And the Haverford Reserve Softball Field, that's the dedicated softball field, right?
Yeah, it's just softball, and it's pretty much used just for softball. We use it, and I say we, meaning the recreation department, uses for some activities in the summertime during the day. But pretty much, it's, the permitting is just through Haverford Township Softball League.
Right, so like dirt infield, no grass?
Exactly. Skinned infield, yes. Skinned infield, you know, it's basically a soft, it was built as a softball field.
And veterans, what baseball clubs use Veterans Field?
Veterans is Brookline's home. Veterans is Brookline's home, and they use it for baseball and softball. It's also home to Sacred Heart Football. They use it in the fall. Sacred Heart Baseball and Softball used to use it, but because of the way we're going to configure the mounds, we're going to move them to Westgate in the spring.
Brookline going to be at Genther and at Veterans?
Well, ultimately, once that's, once the field gets in play, we would relook, take a look at that and try to see if we could get other groups in at either location. But that hasn't been decided, you know, we haven't gone through that yet. The lights probably won't be up until, you know, we're hopefully early May. So this season will be like a half a season, roughly.
Did anyone raise any private funds for the Veterans Field lighting?
No, there was no private funds raised for Veterans Field.
I don't have any other questions, Mr. Barrett. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the information.
Anyone else with any questions? Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is the Police Department, reappointment of chief of police, emergency management coordinator, John Viola.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint chief of police slash emergency management coordinator, John Viola, to a two-year contract effective January 14, 2021, and ending on January 13, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wexler. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Absolutely. Congratulations, chief.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Can't hear you.
Said yes.
Okay. Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Proud to say yes.
Dr. Hart.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Congratulations, chief.
Next item is township auditor update.
Hey, guys, so I reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. And yes, you know, I was expecting to give you guys a joke about Andy Reid getting a last lap in the Eagles, but Tom Brady was up to his old tricks, you know, they brought him out from New England. I think the Chiefs forgot to check every nook and cranny for like a camera or tape recorder or deflated ball. So that's why they got him. And lastly, too, Steve, regarding your hair, you know, it's never too late for a comb over or a wild ponytail.
Thank you.
That was great, Ross.
You're welcome.
Hey, thanks a lot. I'll take that under consideration.
Mr. Berman, you get to follow that up. Township manager update.
Just very briefly, I want to thank from, I mean, really thank the Public Works crew. It was a tough week. Dan's not here tonight. Dan's getting some much-needed rest. The crew was out during the first storm of the week for probably 48 to 50 hours straight. And a couple glitches here and there where people shoveled sidewalks and we pushed the snow off the street back onto the sidewalks. And certainly, we're not in competition. And certainly, we're not in competition, but we need to clear the streets. Folks need to clear the sidewalks. It's, it's just a tough circumstance. So thank you to the Public Works Crew. I can't thank you enough. They were out all day yesterday while many of us were home cooking and getting ready for the Super Bowl. They were out working all day. So thanks to that crew. And I do want to touch base very briefly on the COVID-19 vaccination and what we know from the Delaware County Council and also from the Chester County Health Department. So I've asked Jim McCants to report on that.
Hello, thank you, Dave. The pressing question, I think, obviously for everybody is where and when can I get one? We are still in Phase 1A, which, as many of you know, expanded pretty significantly recently about a week and a half ago and included thousands, actually, tens of thousands of more people. So to let you know where we're at, currently, Delaware County is roughly around 27,000 doses given. It's probably gone up a bit. The last report I have is from a few days ago. So the biggest changes have been in the local healthcare systems, local pharmacies. If you are a, a patient within the Mainline Health System, you can go into the MyChart system or call Mainline Health for their access number to the MyChart system. And if you fit the 1A category, you can, they, you can put in to be, to receive a vaccination. And how they do is to kind of rank their patients as according to their need. Now granted, everybody in 1A, you can have any number of reasons to be in 1A, and they are getting as many vaccinations as they can. But let's face it, there are some people who are immunocompromised and have other very significant or multiple significant risk factors that they're trying to give the vaccination to, and they're actually doing an excellent job with that. The county gets a certain amount of vaccinations. It is distributing them. And now pharmacies are starting to, to, to receive vaccinations from sources. This is my recommendation. If you are, if you are computer savvy and you are able to go online, go to the Chester County website and follow the links to Delaware County. And you can find any number of places to sign up, whether it be through their portals or portals for healthcare systems. It will give you the guidance to get to those, to those locations to sign up. If you do not have computer accessibility, the number to call in Delaware County is 484-276-2100. Again, 484-276-2100. And they will guide you and assist you with getting a, an appointment. When we talk about appointments, this has become something of a sticking point. Many people have signed up for multiple appointments. And I think everybody understands that. You're trying to get in where you can get in and, and there is obviously a need. And even if you're signing up a loved one, you, you realize there's still risk in waiting. So in doing so, if three or four appointments are made and you get one or somebody calls and moves you up a little bit closer and you take that appointment, please cancel the other appointments. Think of it just like a reservation at a restaurant. And if you were to sign up for six different places at dinnertime and only show up at one, well, that's going to clog up the system. It's going to prevent other people from being able to sign on and ultimately can result in waste of vaccine. The vaccine is thawed out and the measurements are done based on how many people are signed up. If you don't show up, they're, you know, they, they try to get them to other people, but it's very short notice. So I ask everybody to be vigilant and to be patient. We're getting, when I say we, I, I, I mean, you know, the healthcare industry as a whole, we're getting to everybody as quickly as possible. They're turning out as much product as they safely can. And multiple places are opening up. Another angle I'd like to kind of, to give to people, another suggestion is to reach out to a pharmacy. If you are part of one of the larger pharmacy chains that you, you deal with CVS or Rite Aid or what have you, if you reach out to them on, either on their website, or they will have a hotline phone number, you can call in and see where vaccinations are in your area. So there's multiple ways of getting there. Again, patience. And we are still trying to stress, even if you're vaccinated, even if your, your loved ones are vaccinated, whatever, continue with the masks, continue with the hand washing. It's very important. A very low amount of people globally have been vaccinated. We still need to be vigilant. As it's been said, nobody wants to die on armistice day. You don't want to go through, we got all the way through 2020. We're starting to get through 2021. Now's not the time to get sick with this disease. So please, please remain vigilant. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, just interested in Jim's thoughts. There's one group in particular that I'm concerned about, and it would be the group that is of an age where they're not computer savvy. They may not have kids in the area to help them and therefore have no ability to know who to call at all, unless you're talking to one of their neighbors or one of their friends. I'm just wondering how we get that, that number that you mentioned earlier, the Delaware County number. If that, we can get that in the newsletter clearly, but I'm wondering if you want to make some kind of call from Dave Berman or somebody or you, township-wide call. Just focus primarily on that group of individuals that don't, don't have access to a computer or don't know how to use a computer, don't have kids in the area to help them. And are really kind of stuck, have no idea what to do, probably don't even know to call that Delaware County number at this point. So I don't know whether that's 100 people or whether that's, you know, 1,000 people, but I think even if it's 100 or 50, I think we need to make every effort to try to, to reach out to that group. So be interested in your, your, your suggestions on how we do that.
I think if we reach as just one person, it's worth it. And I will certainly speak to Mr. Berman and Chief Viola tomorrow about putting it out over our emergency system. Perhaps to give people an update. I think that's excellent. Also, I'd, I'd ask people to go speak to neighbors. You know, if somebody's listening now and there's a, you know, an elderly neighbor across the street, maybe go over and knock and say, hey, what can I do to help you? Here's a number. We can certainly do any number of ways of reaching out to people, even through some of our, our citizen networks that we have. I know we can, I know Meals on Wheels people, some people I know who participated in that have been passing that word on to, to some people. There's neighbors have been stepping up, but you're right, we need to do something a little bit more formal, I think.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe a card, mail out a card or something. But I think that, I think the call from you, you and or Dave would be, would be good to do and maybe do it monthly. I don't know. But just because I, I do know there are a lot of people. I just got a couple of emails today that said that just a lot of people have no idea there's even a number to call in Delaware County.
You can always forward them to me as well. And I know we've dealt, I think I've received at least something from each of you in the past. I will certainly contact the person. And, and it's not just limited to that. I mean, we have delivered masks and sanitizer stuff to, to people who, who are just not able to, to get it. So we can, we can certainly reach out in some circumstances and help people as much as we can in this, certainly.
And also try to help, help them if they need, need a way to get to the, you know, to CBS or get to Mainline Health or wherever the vaccines are being offered, if, you know, if they don't have access to transportation, certainly we want to try to help them there as well.
Yeah, I think you're aware that we did reach out to Mainline Health and Crozier Keystone and offered to actually do onsite vaccinations via some of our, through our, our medic resources here in the township. We're, we're trying. And, and they are receptive to the idea, but right now it's, they are stuck in a logistical quagmire of thousands and thousands of requests and hundreds and hundreds of dosages. So that appears to be the issue.
And we're doing the best we can. Okay, well, if you could, if you could, if you could talk to Dave and come up with some, I don't, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think this is pretty, nothing more important than, than this.
Yeah, well, I don't know if the board wanted to comment, but I'd be glad to work with Jim on that to see how we can get that communication out there.
Okay, thanks. 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 Appreciate it.
One suggestion I would have is if we work not only with Mainline Health, but if we approach the CVSs, the Rite Aids, and the drugstore chains, we have, we have facilities. We have five fire departments. We have the crack. We have this facility within walking distance of a lot of people. If they wanted to set up shop with some of our volunteers, volunteer nurses to use even with their facilities, they've done it at schools. They've showed up. CVS has come to the school where I work and given vaccines several times. So if we want to offer that for our residents to be able to walk to and get assistance from not only our township staff, but our other volunteer organizations that work in the township, the fire departments especially, I think that would be a great idea to have CBS have, say, Monday at one firehouse and Rite Aid at another or whatever, once we get the logistics and the vaccines get out to the street and they can provide it. So just another avenue to get it out. We have 50,000 people in Delaware County. We seem to be getting the short end of the stick. The nearest county vaccination site is down in Yaden, on McDay Boulevard. And we have 50,000 people. We're the second largest entity in this county, and we're not getting the respect that we're due, I believe. So.
I understand completely. Part of the proposal that was, that we put in was to do a drive-through setup, and we had several models for that. And, you know, we're, we're throwing ideas out there. We're making them real workable ideas and we're, we're really trying to get somebody to partner up with us.
Great, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jim.
Sure.
Dr. Hart, I have nothing further.
Okay, yeah, just to, we're now 11 months into our first case in Havford. There's been 107 deaths in Havford as of yesterday during COVID-related deaths. I, you know, at some point, I think we should do something to memorialize those people we've lost during this past year. But certainly, moving forward, it's to continue doing what we've been doing and get the vaccine. Certainly obvious that the lack of a health department in Delaware County has not helped us. The next item, approval of minutes of a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the reorganization minutes of January 4th, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of January 11th, 2021.
There are second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCloskey. Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
He's stepped down.
Thank you. Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn. Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number nine, approval of warrants.
President.
Mr. Holmes.
President, I move we approve warrant number two of 2021 totaling $3,243,430.50 surprising the general and sewer fund payroll for January 21st, 2021 in the amount of $787,838.8 general and sewer fund payroll for February 4th, 2021 in the amount of $655,543.8 general fund disbursements number two of 2021 in the amount of $1,494,401.11 sewer fund disbursements number two of 2021 in the amount of $28,104.49 community development block grant fund disbursement number two of 2021 in the amount of $68,684.10 capital project fund disbursement number two of 2021 in the amount of $193,562.17 the ACHPA Office of Unemployment Benefits in the amount of $3,221.38 credit card statement ending January 27th, 2021 in the amount of $12,076.9
There are second? Second. Second by Mr. Wexler.
Mr. President, our Township Auditor has been through these warrants. Any questions that his review raised were raised with the Township staff and answered to his satisfaction? And he recommends these warrants be approved as do I.
Thank you. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
He's still not back yet.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 10, settlements and stipulations of council.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes.
President, I move we approve a settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of Havford Township School District Tax Assessment Appeal for a property located at 245 West Chester Pike DC Folio number 22-02-00676-01 pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2020-009273 authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
There are second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wexler.
Obviously, the details of this are part of confidential litigation settlement, but to approve you need publicly to approve the settlement and stipulation.
Mr. Berman, could you call the roll? Mr. D'Amelio is not back yet.
Right. Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. The next motion.
Mr. President, I move we approve settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of Havford Township School District Tax Assessment Appeal for property located at 116 Township Line Road, DC Folio number 22-09-0376-00 pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, Civil Action number 2020-009358 authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Second. Second by Mr. Quinn. Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
I'm not getting the audio. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve a settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of Carol Landis and Lester R. Garnes's tax assessment appeal for property located at 243 Valley Ridge Drive, DC Folio number 22-04-00696-66 pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, Civil Action number 2014-11380 and in the matter of Joseph Swift and Kathy Swift's tax assessment appeal for property located at 117 Green Lane, DC Folio number 22-04-00451-53 both cases consolidated under the Civil Action number 2014-11378 authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Quinn. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 11, his ordinance number P1 2021, which is a lease or Havford Township Free Library. It's the second reading.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P1 2021 authorizing the lease of certain township grounds. Havford Free Township Free Library.
Second. Second by Mr. Quinn. Any comments? I'm sorry, Mr. Aliva.
I've been, you've been, you've been calling me quick, Mr. Quinn.
I've been, you've been, you've been calling me quick, Mr. Quinn.
It's the haircut, Mario.
Yeah. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Next item is ordinance number P2 2021, Traffic First Reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P2 2021, authorizing the following traffic restrictions. Amendment to the sticker parking only on Vernon Road all times entire length and rescind special purpose parking zones in front of 2946 Berkeley Road.
Second. I'm assuming that was Mr. Quinn this time.
Yeah.
That's a pretty good assumption.
Mr. Berman, can you, unless there's comment, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio. Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 13, Ordinance Number P3 2021, Skadium Renewal Pro Shop Lease First Reading.
President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance number P3 2021, authorizing the lease of township grounds, particularly the pro shop located at our township's stadium, 1018 Darby Road, Havertown PA. Second.
Second by Mr. Wexler. Any comments?
This is something we discussed in executive session as it was pertains to real estate, but also something we discussed last week at our, at our work session. And it is a lease that we should approve.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Number four, number 14, Ordinance Number P4 2021, Traffic First Reading.
President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P4 2021, establishing off-highway metered parking areas at the former township building, 2325 Darby Road.
Second. Second by Mr. Quinn. Any comments? This will be daytime metered parking and nighttime still available to?
I think that would be a question. I mean, I, I would assume so, but.
It, it changes, I will, I will say that it changes the, the parking lot from a free lot to a metered lot for the hours during which the meters are required, and it'll be properly signed.
So from eight till five or eight till four?
I believe that's correct. I'd have to double check the ordinance.
We'll probably go eight to six, but that'll free that lot up and allow more parking for more people instead of the business people parking there all day tying it up. So I think it's beneficial for the business owners in the Oakland District.
Thank you. Read. Any comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll? Mr. D'Amelio is back.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 15, Resolution Number 2213 2021, which is the 2021 Liquid Fuels Funding.
President.
Mr. Holmes.
President, I move we adopt resolution number 2213-2021, authorizing the filing of an application with the County of Delaware for the allocation of the county liquid fuels tax funds in the amount of $66,960.
There are second? Second. Mr. Quinn.
Yeah, Mario. Mario.
Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 16, Authorization for the Former Brookline School.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Motion to authorize the township manager and township engineer to take necessary steps to solicit bids for the demolition of the former Brookline School.
There are second?
Second.
Second by, Mr. Holmes got in. Any comments?
We just make a change when we publish this agenda to, from demotion of the Brookline School to demolition. Although I guess demolition is the ultimate demotion, right?
It got demoted.
They kept it in school terms, it looks like.
I just, I did want to clarify a few things. I appreciated all the comments. I appreciate the architectural, historical, and sentimental value of the school. I wouldn't have spent four to six months working on the ad hoc committee if I didn't think there was a value in the school. At this point, this is a vote to put a bid out. This is not a vote as yet to demolish the school. Typically, the bids are out 16 to 90 days, so we would not be voting on that till May at the earliest, possibly June. Also, it, we do need to keep in mind that building is in serious disrepair. It's in my district. I get comments on a regular basis from neighbors in the area about the broken windows, about the, the boarding off of windows. So I don't think it's something that we can put off indefinitely. I appreciate some of the ideas people have to redevelop it. I would say we do need to keep in mind the school was built 100 years ago at a time when there were few cars. Most people walk, the kids walked to the school. Some of these ideas, there's 28 parking spaces at, at the school. Some of the ideas from a community center, workspace. This school is in the middle of a neighborhood, and, and it, it did function well as a school. It was able to be used for the senior center and a daycare. But I think, you know, some of the other ideas are not something that the neighborhood can handle. There was also a comment, again, that we are not going to leave an empty lot there should ultimately the school be demolished. There would be plans to enlarge the park. And certainly, there are lots of pocket parks. If anyone take a look at Linwood Park in, in Argmore, it would be, it's a beautiful neighborhood park. It would be something that, and again, we, we have no direct plans at this point, but there certainly could be enhanced at the neighborhood. Anyone else have any comments at this point?
Mr. President.
The only comment.
Mr. Holmes.
The only comment I would have.
Mr. Aliva.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Mario. I'll, I'll go after you.
Yeah, the only comment I have, I mean, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place here. We either, we either knock down the school or we have to revert it back to the school district. We can't do any, I mean, we spent, Jerry and Connor, we spent, you know, months researching this and, and finding the best use. And, and now we see that we can't do that. It, it has to revert back to the school district. So we really, I mean, our, our choices are really send it back to the school district or, or, or knock this building down and make it a, a park.
Mr. Siegel.
Yeah, I mean, there, there remains the alternative that we had discussed and having not yet funded renovations to the library. When we last discussed this, there was the opportunity to build a two-story rectangular building with 60 parking spots and preserving the back end of the park. And I would hope that this board would again consider that alternative since we have yet. Although we've improved, we've approved in theory renovation of the library. No funding has been allocated. We've also received a million dollar potentially Iraq P. Grant. I think we need to consider that as a community opportunity again.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I agree with Commissioner Siegel that, that does remain an option. And, but it's not an option if we don't proceed with the demolition of this building. I appreciate that it's going to take 90 days maybe for us to solicit bids and build up some comfort with, with who we pick and how much it's going to cost. But I do think after all this time, we shouldn't continue to tell people and have for township, well, we're making this decision to solicit bids, but we're still not sure we're going to demolish it. I, I've stated that we should tear that building down. I don't live in that ward, so perhaps I'm less vulnerable to, you know, in that ward or near that ward. And so I may be less vulnerable to local criticism at the insensitivity of, of my notion that that building has to go. But that building has to go. There is nothing useful that we as a township can do as stewards of our township resources, make that building useful. Once that building is torn down, it opens up to us the opportunity either to make it a park, the opportunity perhaps to reconsider the library or some other type of township use that we could do with another structure there. But I think it's time for us to say we are soliciting these bids for demolition because it's the intent of this board to tear that building down. I, I think we owe it to the people who are for that. And frankly, I think we owe it to the people who are so vehemently against it so they don't continue to try to convince me not to tear this building.
Mr. McCloskey, did you? Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say a few, few words. I, I agree with Jerry and Mario and I. We spent lots of time with this group and we tried to look and save this place. And I, I'm, I, it's, it's a tough, tough thing to tear down something that means a lot to everybody. But during this bid, when this bid, bid is out, I will keep, or I'll keep or, or this open mind. And if, and if somebody comes to, or like, or, or if somebody comes up to me with an idea, I think that we have, that we, the nine of us have, they have to hear, hear it out. And, and there's still a chance if there's somebody that proposes something. So I don't, so I don't want them to not still, like, still explore this idea and stuff. Just so that's out there too.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Mr. Quinn. I, you know, the last time we, we did, in fact, it was a year ago to, this, this month where we decided to table a bid. So I, I, while we certainly are moving forward with the process, I'm open to hearing suggestions in the interim. I don't know that who else is open to them, but I, I think there are at least a few members, commissioners, who are still not made a final decision on this.
I think the important thing, I think, to keep in mind is we have a great resource there. Building's in disarray, I agree. Probably needs to be torn down. But we're not obligated to, to create a use for this immediately. It's a resource that we're entrusted with. We're going to keep it as open space individually now. But in the future, there probably is going to be a great community use that would arise that both us and the school district that could combine forces with for the betterment of our community down the road. So it's, it's there. God's not creating any more open space that we got. We're not going to give it up to a developer. We're going to keep it for our residents. And somewhere down in the future, probably not this board, but future boards, will have that as a resource to come up with an alternative use that's going to benefit this community hopefully.
Mr. Holmes.
I, I trust Mr. Wexler. When you talk about the resource we're going to have, you're talking about the land.
The land.
You're talking about the site.
The open space that we're going to create now is still, that lot is still a resource that's available for future boards to create whatever community use arises and is needed.
Because this isn't a free. This is not a free exercise of us putting these bids together. This is telling our township personnel to stop what they're doing in other projects and put together this bid for this demolition. It's to ask our township engineer to spend the time and our township money on his time to be able to prepare these bids and then review these bids. I just think, I, I, to the extent that I, to the extent that my comments would suggest that I'm close-minded about this, it was not my, my point. My point is that we have now, we're approaching three years of considering this building. And I don't expect in the next 60 to 90 days, somebody to come up with a reason now why we should keep a building that would make, cost $10 million simply to make safe. So I, I, it's time for us, it's time for some of my colleagues to say in favor of demolishing this and take a position. I didn't mean to hold out, is to give people, give preservationist false hope and is for us just, I, I think not to be straight with our.
But I wouldn't say that we're giving them a false hope. I'm saying like, just if there's somebody that comes to us and says anything, I believe that we should have an open mind. I'm not saying that you're closed-minded on that. I'm just saying that we should keep, keep an open mind on it.
I think we should vote.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes, to authorize the township manager and township engineer to take necessary steps to solicit bids for the demolition of the former Brookline School.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item numbers, well, next time is Parks and Rec.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to authorize temporary lighting at Carricon Field for Havertown Little League, subject to bid requirements.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wexler.
Second.
Third.
Second.
You know, I think this is a bad precedent we're setting. We're, this is not an emergency. The, I, probably not a bigger fan of, of Little League baseball on the board than I am. Been involved with it for 25 years. There, Havreford Little League has gotten along without lights for 60 years. We are now giving them $12,000. I, there are, I agree with Mr. Lewis, they're great volunteers. As are their great volunteers at Hilltop, Brookline, The Blaze, The Hawks, Havreford Soccer. We are not giving them funds, emergency funds. And I, I, long-term, we're lighting and end up lighting a third field because we're, we're not able to tell leagues that they need to share the fields. These are township fields, and I think that they need to be used by the organizations as we direct them, that this is not, if any league needs more lighting, it's the older kids. We have one field that's available for two nights and they're for all of the 13 to 18-year-olds. We're now going to have ultimately three Little League fields lit. It, it just seems a poor use of our resources.
So can I ask you a question? Maybe Brian can best answer this. Brian, if Caricon Little League wanted to play under the lights at the at the ball fields that we have lighting for, I assume that you'd make room for them?
Yeah, we would if if I think with veterans coming online, we would have to look at all of our lighting situation and feel how we could adequately share among all the groups in town.
Am I concerned? Like my concern is that is there adequate lighting now for everybody?
So if you ask the Little Leagues or you ask soccer or you ask football, the answer to that would be no. Lighting is always a tricky thing because it can be a neighbor's issue.
And people like to play when they want to play too, so.
Sure. And and you know, our fields are used constantly and are used more and more every year because players are playing year round, different sports. You know, 25 years ago, you didn't have the usage you're seeing today where there's many players playing two and three different sports 12 months a year. So the organizations are definitely always looking for more time. Even if there was no snow on the field of turf tonight, there would be groups out there using the fields in 20 degree weather. So there's groups that are always open to using lit fields whenever they're available.
Well, I don't I this is something that's been brought before the Parks Board. My understanding is that was unanimously supported by the Parks Board recommendation that we light Caricon actually with permanent lighting. At some point, we decided not to do that this year. But we did talk about maybe possibly doing it next year. So this is lighting that would be used just for this year. And then we can revisit whether we want to light the field permanently next year. But this is this is a league that where we have fathers who are basically maintaining that field on their own time. They're raising money for their league. They're coaching the kids, just asking for a little assistance. Last year, they paid for the lights themselves. But I think, you know, it's a lot to ask to have them coach our kids, you know, maintain the fields, raise money, do it all while the township kind of sits back and and lets them do it all. So I think this is a very, very small thing that we can do to help them. And I'd be supportive of doing it on other fields as well. It's not it's not a big expense, so I'm firmly in favor.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Brian, can I ask you a question?
Do you? Sure.
I guess I hadn't thought about it before, but just something Andy said. So so we're we're essentially putting up temporary lights with this with this money for this year. Are these are these things we're purchasing or these things we're renting? What is what is the?
Yeah, it's a rental. We there's been other examples where there's been rentals by certain groups like Havford Soccer rented some lights a few years ago to light up a second field at Havford Reserve to extend practices in the fall. St. Dennis rented some lights a few years ago to do some practices at Limwood Field to extend fall, you know, fall practices in the evening. So it's it's something that has been done before. We actually rented some lights for our own programming up at Havford Reserve two years ago for our field hockey program. So it's something we've done before, but it is a rental. It's not a purchase.
Brian, those other groups that you mentioned, did they pay for the Havford Soccer? Did they pay for the rental?
Those groups did pay for the we did pay. We we actually rented lights for Sacred Heart Football because of the problems. I shouldn't say the problems because of the building of the township building and that they lost their lights for a while due to due to the construction. We did pay for them to have lights, not last year because it was canceled, but the previous year in 2019.
But but they're not they're also not out there, you know, maintaining the field, football field or soccer field either, so.
Yeah, but Andy, I mean.
A big difference, a big difference.
I'm not disagreeing, but Brookline does that, Hilltop does that, the soccer leagues do it. So it isn't there's a lot of volunteers and we haven't been given the money. That's the my objection.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I when this came up last week, I what I was one of the things I was reacting to was this notion of we're going to do the lights, then other groups were going to have to be able to use the field and it can't be dedicated to baseball only. And that's why I asked Mr. Barrett those particular questions that I asked. Yes, I guess Genthard Field was originally funded by private by private groups. But since that time, we pay. Genthard is limited to baseball and softball. And the township covers the electricity costs there. There hasn't been much maintenance, but I'm assuming if there is maintenance, the township would plan on paying for that. Township is doing veterans. I I don't I'm really not interested in splitting that many hairs here on this issue. I think there's been enough public, there's been enough township funds paid in these different sports that I'm having trouble distinguishing with this request for for Caricon and for what has happened for other baseball or other sports. So I do support this this request. And I I've been keeping my powder dry on this issue because I think there's a lot of issues from a lot of different directions. But I'm satisfied with Mr. Barrett's information that he gave us today that this is the fair thing to do. So I support it.
Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
I just have one more question.
Sure, Mr. Demilio.
Just for clarification, so Brian, the the lights at Genthard Field, who paid for that?
The they were put to Westgate came up with a lot of the funding, Steve, for that. I think they got some donations from PICO. They got electrical work donated. They had gentlemen put up time to help to put up the poles. And I think we purchased the fixtures. But that's a little bit before I was taking care of that. I'm not exactly sure of all details, but I do know that Westgate put a lot of resources into that.
So so why can't we look for ways that we could do something similar? And even contact PICO, maybe reduce the the amount that the township would have to eat? Why can't we do that?
We could look into that. Now, again, what we're doing to veterans obviously is a little bit more significant. And if you were to, you know, field lighting is is a science, as I'm finding out. The engineering involved is pretty significant, especially when you're talking about balls in the air for baseball because of the chance of being injured with the ball, you know, without adequate lighting. So but we could consider, you know, seeing if there's is a possibility to get some some buy in from PICO or, you know, from the Little League or maybe other ways to to secure funding.
So again, so I understand this correctly. Is anyone and I don't know if Jerry, if you would know or Andy, is anyone complaining on Caricon around there about the lights? Presidents, are they concerned?
We did get some gentleman who called us a few times last year about the lights. And we said we were going to revisit that.
Caricon is situated pretty well for purposes of of neighbor concerns. It's in the valley. The only thing that has a direct view of Caricon and of the fields is basically Caricon Swim Club across the way. And I guess I guess some folks maybe headed up Mill Road might have a view of those lights. But the Jett Tract, there's a hill there. So I that there's there are there are geographical and topographical elements to that little valley there that kind of make it less intrusive, I think, to the neighbors than than lighting would, for instance, at Veterans or lighting would, let's say, at Elwell or lighting might, if they ever put it like at Normandy, you'd be smack in the middle of a neighborhood. And Caricon isn't that that just isn't designed that way. There's no homes on Caricon Drive at all, except one just up from it. And that's at the top of a big top of a big hill. I I, Mr. Barrett, can I get a clarification on something? Did you? Because I didn't understand this from earlier. You said the electricity we're covering, we haven't had much maintenance. But did you just say that we, the township, paid for the fixtures?
I'm not I I'm not entirely sure. That project was Tim's project and that was probably 10 or 15 years ago. So I'm not sure of all details. I do know that there was significant input and resources brought to the table by the Westgate Little League Organization. I'd have to check.
And and if we were talking about a project right now of of doing that construction and doing that work, I would expect us to invoke all that kind of stuff. This started as a request to in the budget last year to undertake a project like that. And I think we all unanimously said it it shouldn't jump ahead. So the request became the township cover the cost of running the lights this year because I guess last year Caricon covered the lights.
Yes.
Have that right, Mr. Lewis? Mr. Barrett?
Yes, they did cover the lights you had last year. And they they felt like they needed them because they played in the fall, not the spring. So they were losing.
I'm assuming if we rent this equipment, you've got a rental cost. And then I assume we separately have the energy cost associated with lighting these lights, right? You don't you don't get that all at once.
They're typically they're typically powered by, I think, propane. So you would have to they would have to be filled. Yeah, they're not they're not they're not plugged in anywhere. There there there's some type of, you know, combustion engine on it.
So is it an all in one thing or would we separately enter into a gas propane contract to cover these things?
Yeah, we hadn't gotten that far in the conversation. And when previous times, the user groups took care of filling the tanks for those things. But we hadn't gotten that far in the conversation on this this issue.
Mr. Lewis, do you have any idea what they did last year?
I don't. We can find out between now and the time we get the bids back.
Well, last year, they would have done it themselves. If they paid for the rental themselves, they would have filled the propane themselves. So I assume they had a system to fill the propane.
Yeah, I'm sure that's that's probably correct.
Right. What I'm curious.
And they're only asking they're only asking here for the cost of the rental, so.
We can let them pay for.
If we if we if we do pass this, I would I would be of the position that we fulfill the request and they can pay for their own propane.
Well, but the one thing I would say, right, my response to that, Mr. McCloskey, you're not wrong to think like that. But I I think we as a township may have far greater buying power and bargaining power than Havford Little League would have when it comes to this. I think it's just something we should we should analyze. I I don't know whether, you know, I don't know the answer to that question. But I have to assume as a consumer of electricity and of gas, I would just imagine we would be in a much better bargaining position than the the volunteers that Havford Little League would be be able to negotiate a good gas contract. In fact, they could we could have them reimburse us for it. But at least see if we can get it as cheaply as possible.
I believe that might be a problem. I think Boyle Brothers is now a propane distributor, so he's an active Little League parent himself, so.
About that.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
For some reason, I can't hear you. Mr. Wexler.
Yes, that was yes.
Thank you both very much. Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
No. Item number 17, contract purchase Bureau of Fire.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of fire resistant materials for extensive renovations being performed at the Fire Training Tower from Fire Facilities Incorporated, Sun Prairie, Wisconsin, in the amount of $51,359.
Second.
This is for the training area down there. We probably Chief Iola could probably speak greater depth of that if he wanted to. There's also a second contract below that and for the other renovations that are going on there. Chief, you want to say something about the tower and how important it is to the fire service?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. The the tower gets a lot of use from our five volunteer fire companies. And inside of the tower are panels that are designed to take the heat from it and act of burn. They they haven't been replaced in probably 20 years with the exception of some broken ones. With the amount of heat that's in there, which we keep to a certain standards, it it just got to the point where it had to be fixed. If we did not, the steel would start to warp, start to rust, and we lose that tower completely. We are probably one of the only training towers in the area of all Delaware County right now that's still active and used extensively only for our volunteer fire companies. So this is a great asset for us that's been built was built over 30, 35 years ago. Has been kept up and kept in very good shape. But it's just it's it's this upgrade that needed to be done.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
President, the second half of this is to approve the installation services pertaining to extensive renovations being performed at the Fire Training Tower from Burachoa Construction Incorporated, Columbus, Wisconsin, in the amount of $34,000.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Demilio. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Next item, Police Department Audio Visual Equipment.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve to approve applied video technology. 2218 Kimberton Road, Kimberton, PA, to install video, audio recording and monitoring equipment in two police interrogation rooms under CoStar's contract 034-027, the amount of $27,739, and install networking and speaker amplifier in police training room, Emergency Operations Center, under CoStar's contract number 034-027, the amount of $13,548, funding for both projects from federal confiscation funds.
Second. Second amendment. I'm not. Mr. Aliva. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Next item is vehicle purchase.
Does Chairman make a motion to authorize purchase of one 2021 Ford Police Interceptor Utilia All Drive with hybrid engine from Hundra Ford 300 South Main Street, Manheim, PA, under PA CoStar's contract 13-003, the amount of $38,800, and the quotes are on file.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Wexler. Beat you, kind of. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 18, appointments, civil service solicitor.
Somebody want to take this?
Was it Jim McAndrews?
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to make make a motion to appoint Jim McAndrews for a civil service or solicitor for one one year term until December 2021.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Aliva.
What is his name?
McAndrew.
Again?
McAndrew.
McAndrew.
McAndrews.
Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Mr. McAndrew.
Mr. Aliva.
Mr. McAndrews.
Mr. McCloskey.
Mr. McAndrews.
Mr. Siegel.
I've submitted a recusal statement to you, Mr. Berman, and I'm recusing myself from this vote.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
Mr. McAndrews.
Mr. Holmes. Mr. Wexler.
Yes, to Mr. McAndrews.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes, Mr. McAndrew. Historical Commission.
Mr. President, motion to accept the recommendation of Jack Garrett to fill an unexpired four year term as the Planning Commission representative on the Historical Commission to expire December 31, 2022.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. This is came about because we appointed the previous representative to the zoning commission, so there was an opening. Mr. Berman.
Right, just to just to clarify for the public, it's not a new opening. It's just the Planning Commission representative.
Jack Garrett.
Jack Garrett.
Garrett. Yeah, here.
All right. Mr. D'Amelio.
Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Aliva.
Mr. Garrett.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Senior Citizen Advisory Board, Mr. D'Amelio, anybody? Not yet. Mr. McCloskey.
Margaret Lang, L-A-N-G.
Thank you.
Yeah, I keep on sending things out, so I might have, we have a name, but he lives in Ward 2, so I might be using him, so I'll let you know.
Okay.
You're not allowed.
Vacancy Committee. I don't believe we had any applications, so.
I, isn't, I'm sorry, isn't this, didn't we already fill this? I thought this was Ed Herzog.
No, to clarify, Mr. Herz, the board appointed Mr. Herzog to the vacant property advisory, advisory board.
Okay.
And this one was left vacant because there were questions about whether this position was compatible with the other boards and commissions. And I don't know if Mr. Burn had clarified that for the board.
The vacancy board is a, is a board that's, that is, you know, is in place only to appoint if there's a, if there's a vacancy in an office of the, of the board. And I think we've, we've narrowed it down in, in our, with respect to our township with the charter, that I think it's only for the, if I can remember right, I think it was the township treasurer or the, or, or some, one of the offices. There's only one office that they would appoint with because our charter is different than a normal first-class township code. But the, but the vacancy board and the vacancy committee are two different things. So, so the vacancy board's to fill in an, an absent spot. If the board, if, if the board, this board doesn't come to grips with, with getting a replacement for the officer that left. And I believe it was the, the office of treasurer, but I can't, I can't swear to that. I don't remember what that was. I'll double check on that.
And, and the other question was whether this position would be incompatible with any of the other. Can another vol, can a volunteer in one of our other advisory boards serve in this role? I think is what the board had questions about at the last meeting.
You know, I had to apologize and say I, I fell through the cracks, so I mean, I, I have to get back to you and I just don't know. I, I'll have to check it and see.
Mr. Byrne, you've said treasurer several times. You mean auditor, right? What was the one?
Auditor, that's what I meant, yes. Yeah.
I know we've had that discussion before, and I think we, I think we were all comfortable with your conclusion several years ago that the sole function of that committee would be to replace an auditor.
The auditor, right. The auditor, if, if in fact the board couldn't come to a, a, an appointment.
Right.
Himself, yeah. But I, I forgot, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I just, I, I dropped the ball on that one in terms of whether it's compatible with the other advise, another advisory committee. And I'll have to get back to you on that. I just don't know.
You were too busy remembering how to tie that bow tie.
That's what it was.
Now, I served on that board for three years and, yeah, I don't know what I did, so.
Got you the Maytag repairman of our boards, I think.
It would only come into play if we had an even number on the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
And it's.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll get you the answer. I'll get it for you tomorrow. I just, I've just forgot it, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you. The solar ad hoc committee, I think ultimately we can appoint five people. There's motions.
Mr. President.
Yes.
What I'd like to do, we have five applicants. I believe our colleagues have, have seen the resumes that were circulated. I would, I would nominate all five to fill the board right now if that didn't violate anybody's sense of decorum.
No objections.
I would like to, I would like to appoint Victor Donae and Joy Baxter and Jen Leith and Ben Suplek and Noel, and I hope I get his name right. I'm going to call him Smith, but he's with a Y, so I don't know if he's Smythe. Noel Smith for, to serve on the solar ad hoc committee for the amount of time we, we, the amount of time that we use that committee to advise us on our solar project.
Second.
And quick thing, we, we don't have to say all five names, right? I mean, if.
I think, right, I've nominated a slate of five and it's enough to say yes or no. Although I don't think you can do line item vetoes. Either pick my slate or say no, and then we'll do people one at a time.
Yeah.
Mr. Berman.
Dr. Hart, I didn't get the second on that.
Second.
I did.
Thank you.
Somebody did.
I just want to get it in the record. Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
You're muted, Mario.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes, to all of them.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Next item, number 19, is the continuation of the citizens forum for non-agenda items. Are there any comments, Mr. Berman?
Let me see if there are any hands raised in our participants. I don't see any, okay, I do have a hand raised. It's Susanna Baruko, and I'll allow her to speak if you're ready, Dr. Hart.
Sure, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just, you, thank you for reading my comments, Dr. Hart, earlier in the meeting regarding the Brookline School. I'm not going to reiterate what was said there. I think you all probably know where I stand on this. But I do want to register my disappointment in the conversation tonight, particularly my own commissioner, unfortunately, Commissioner Holmes. I'm sorry that you don't see, see the need to be open-minded about this, although I appreciate your honesty about where this, where the, the conversation has gone regarding the Brookline School. In my opinion, and I, I do this professionally, and I've been working with historic buildings for more than 25 years in Philadelphia. And I teach, so I like to think that I keep track of what is going on in my industry. And I would say that the board, I think it's unfortunate. I think it's very short-sighted that this building is going to be pushed and that the value is seen in an empty lot on that site. And I don't think that the board has seriously considered options. I think it's unfortunate that even though I've been involved in understanding and working on this issue, at least since the time when the ad hoc committee met, and I think it's, was, somebody said it was a year ago that we started meeting, and yet a week ago I find out that, about this whole reverter clause. I mean, had we known about that a year ago, we might have thought in a different direction for this building. I'm not really sure how that information was not apparent or not volunteered. But again, I find it very disappointing, and there are times when I really don't believe that it's, it's the board's intent. But it really does seem sometimes like the process is extremely opaque and the lack of, the lack of, of openness and the, and the, and the lack of creative thinking is really, it stuns me sometimes, and I'm being very candid, and I hope, I hope you'll forgive me for being so candid this evening. But it really is incredibly short-sighted. Historic schools have been repurposed all over the place. I mean, they're one of the easiest building types to be repurposed, and we really haven't given this building any consideration as an asset. And I find that very disheartening. So I'm sure you'll hear from me again, even, even if you don't think what I have to say will matter in your decision, I accept that. But I will continue to advocate for this building because I believe it's important. And I believe as a board, if you'll allow me to say so from my point of view, I think that some more creative thinking is really needed. So I want to thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just, let me explain how the reverter clause came about. I spoke to the head of the school board, Larry Feinberg, in, I would say about three weeks ago, maybe, maybe, I don't know, maybe a month ago. And at the time, I just to say, to discuss the situation and our interest in having them allow, to revisit the contract and allow us to proceed with putting out bids with a private developer. His initial response was positive. He thought that they would be willing to do that, but he wanted to check with his solicitor. His response came about 10 days later, and the solicitor advised them that they were not legally allowed to change, to do anything with it. That it was whenever this reverter clause had to be in effect, and there wasn't anything they were going to be able to do. We took another week to have our solicitor take a look at things, and he agreed with that decision. So there was nothing done behind closed doors that this was something we weren't aware of. And that's, in fact, we did not get a final opinion until last Monday before our work session. So it's not really something we could have revealed prior to that. It wasn't, I don't think anybody was trying to hide anything. Certainly, none of the commissioners who are on the ad hoc committee were aware of it, and I don't think any of the commissioners on our board were aware of it, nor apparently was the school district, so it's.
Mr. President.
Dr. Hart, could I, could I add something to that?
Sure.
Yeah, and, and, you know, when we, when we, when we took the property or got the property from the school district, the thoughts were that it was going to be used for something with a public purpose, where the reverter, the reverter language would never come into, into play. So the reverter is, the reverter language is actually found in the school code itself. So there really was no intention of taking the property to, to flip it, so to, so to speak, to, to a private use. It was only after we explored the library and a couple other public uses that the idea of maybe doing some type of apartments came up. So the reverter clause has, has always been in the law, and, and it's something that really didn't come into play until we got to the, to the point where we were looking at other things to do other than something for a public purpose.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
The reverter clause is state law, and the, with all due respect to Ms. Baruko, this issue has been addressed for multiple years, starting when Mr. Gentili was still township manager, and the initial discussions came about, including meetings with the school board. In all of the discussions, in all of the public statements that were made, and I was involved in many of them because at that time the property committee was involved, we stated publicly that we would, we were acquiring that building solely for the purpose of a public use, which would either be a library or fields or something like that. And at, and that if we weren't using it for that, the school district would not have agreed to allow it to be conveyed to us. At the time, they were exploring options for the sale of that building for, for a private group or a nonprofit group. And as a result, I certainly know, I know I had discussions with, at that time, President Wexler. We were aware of those requirements. And the reality was that the, the board attempted to try to find another use. I don't think it's appropriate, I didn't think it was appropriate for this board to do the exploration it did, but I sat by. And so we were aware of this stipulation, and in fact, I know I researched it as property, on the property committee side, to see what was allowed in a conveyance that the public didn't watch or read about every meeting. We can't control that as a board. But this is certainly something that has gone on since Mr. Gentili was here, and that's, you know, we've already renewed Mr. Berman's contract after a couple of years. So it's a while ago. And the board, because of what the committee, the ad hoc committee did, we have delayed movement on the township building. We have, we had again put the library on hold. And I think what this board did tonight was a responsible action so that we can move forward, not only with the planning for that property, but the planning for the township building. It also can help with the township, the, the plan. So there are a lot of benefits to finally moving forward consistent with the terms of the deed in Pennsylvania law and implications that this has been a quick decision. The quick decision was last year, when in our first meeting during the pandemic, when we decided to actually deal with substance, we decided to vote on the library, giving no one any type of notice. We found out a week before. So I, I find it disingenuous when people say that we were not public. Your group has done more than any group since I've been on this board to try to work with the public, that it didn't reach a, assist, a, a resolution that the public, or some members of the public, I've been, I've received many comments contrary to what we've heard tonight, that you didn't, you weren't able to satisfy them. You, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Aliva, you all worked very hard to try to find a resolution. And unfortunately, not all the time does it happen. And that's not something that anyone, I believe, on this board should be faulted for. Your motives were good, your intentions were good, and sometimes the results just don't just, don't reach the, you know, our desired intentions.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Going to lighten the mood a little bit for a second and just say, Ms. Baruka, I forgive your candor. And I, I regret that you, that you, you view, how I view this as close-minded. Like Mr. Siegel said, I, I just think we have different approaches, but you're going to have to take my word on this. You came up to run the historical commission again, and I was your strongest advocate on the board. We may not always see eye to eye on these issues, but I know your value, and I know your passion in this project. It, it so happens we don't agree on this, but I have found over the years that we've agreed on a few other things, so.
You'll have to tell me about them.
All things being equal, we'll just, we'll just have to stick with this cat and dog relationship we have. And, but, but I, look, I appreciate what you said, and I at least appreciate you saying something about the honesty, but I have to support what Dan Siegel said here. People have tried very hard to do something here. We are really stuck with something, and I have to think about the entire township when I, when I talk about what I think our next steps have to be. In a perfect world with an unlimited amount of money, there's a lot of things we could do, but we don't have that, and we have to make priorities. And so I, I just, I feel comfortable, but, you know, I, I know you're disappointed in at least the decision that I've reached, but I do appreciate your, your candor and your passion.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Just want to say thank you. I, I appreciate that.
Dr. Hart.
Yes, Mr. Berman.
I don't know if it was intentional, but Mr. Anderson has raised his hand, so I'm going to ask him to unmute if that's, if you're ready for that.
Yes. Yeah, so I just want to have a quick, no, I forgot to say, thank you to all those township workers out there who really busted their butt over this past, this past week cleaning up these streets because they all did a good, they did a phenomenal, they did a great job. And also, I know the storms, that one in particular was incredibly long, and I'd say thanks for all the work, but also to, thank you to all the neighbors who did more than their fair share of like shoveling, like shovel the neighbors' yard, just shoveled more down the street to get more people. So thank you as well.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I don't see any.
Any new business?
Here, here you go.
We normally do the work at the work session, but they just got this to me this, this week, so I'd like to present their, their first monthly report from the Bureau of Fire. Uh, this year's head of the Bureau of Fire is Chief Michael E. Norman from Manoa Fire Company. The report is such, the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire responded to 88 incidents in the month of January 2021. The membership response total for members responding to calls was 1,114 members. The weekly combined training was 800 hours. It was one significant incident for the month in the 100 block of Myrtle Avenue for a house fire. Crews from all five fire companies responded to a second floor bedroom fire on the first of January. All five fire companies have begun their annual recertification in CPR and hazardous materials operations. Manoa Fire Company has completed a swift water rescue team, their swift water rescue team has completed a 16-hour ice rescue class up in Lake Harmony, Pennsylvania, and they're now one of the few state-certified water rescue companies in the state, certainly in this area of Delaware County. So it's another place where Haverford Township, in addition to providing a lot of SWAT expertise and special operations, on the police side, we now provide a very specialized rescue unit from our Bureau of Fire. So I think that's, the amount of training that those people went through was unbelievable. They should be congratulated for that. And then they also want to thank the board for your investment in our continued training and safety by the improvements to the fire safety tower. You can't realize, being a volunteer firefighter, how important that is, um, not only for your safety, but your self-confidence, and the ability to work together in, uh, in a fire environment when it's completely black and in real heat conditions under actual fire conditions. So on behalf of the Bureau of Fire, all the fire, fire companies, thank you, as I'm sure Chief Viola does as well. That's the only new business I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Other business? Mr. DiMillo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Chief, congratulations on your contracts. Well deserved. On Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 10th, I will be hosting a virtual first ward meeting. A, uh, a bulletin, uh, did go out. I'll send another one out tomorrow. Uh, so this is, um, unfortunately, we still have to do a virtual meeting. Uh, I also want to thank, uh, all of our Public Works employees for the incredible job that they did in the last two storms. It looks like they're going to have to do it again this week. Chief, is that what we're calling for? Another potential snowstorm? I know they work incredibly hard, and I appreciate everything that they do. I would advise residents to, uh, not remove snow right away because the plows are still going up and down the streets, and what happens is, you clear your driveway, they're not finished, and then your driveway is blocked, and you're very upset. So I would, uh, I would, uh, wait a bit until you really, um, the storm is pretty much over with before you, uh, remove the snow. Um, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Aliva.
Thanks, Jim.
Mr. President, um, I would like to, first of all, I'd like to thank the Public Works employees. I know there was, um, there's a, um, they take, uh, a lot of heat out there on the street, um, when, you know, uh, nobody's happy, everybody thinks that they're being targeted with, uh, with this snow, and, um, uh, they did a great job, fantastic job, uh, along there. I also want to thank the police for, uh, this is, this is difficult for them also, because they have to go, I saw them going down Darby Road, uh, to clear the snow emergency routes, um, having to go door to door, uh, trying to get people to move their cars before they had to get towed. Um, uh, the police did a great job with that. Uh, Darby Road is, uh, the, the parking on Darby Road is, uh, is good, uh, because they went out there and had, uh, did that, and then the plows were able to clear along there so the cars could park, uh, later on. So if you just remember that, um, like, uh, Commissioner DiMillo was saying, uh, wait until the snow is over, and, uh, and then go out and clear, because if not, you're going to be doing it twice, because we're clearing curb to curb. And, um, I've had many people call me and, and complain, uh, that they've had to do it twice. Um, so if you just, just be patient, and, uh, we, we don't go out and, uh, take people right away if, uh, their sidewalks aren't clear. I, I know that, um, it, uh, it's a couple of days before we go out and, and start, um, doing that sort of stuff. So, uh, thank you very much, and, uh, I have nothing further.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yeah, also, we're just reiterate, Public Works, all those, everybody there did a great job, and, uh, appreciate it. Um, I, I do want to, do want to, um, note that I think, you know, tonight, although these are all little, little steps towards a larger goal, um, I think tonight was a, a large step in our goals for, uh, our energy uses that we have for 2035 and 2050, uh, both the, the starting of the ad hoc solar panel committee, um, and the purchase of a hybrid police car. I know, um, Chief Viola and Deputy Chief Hagan have, uh, you know, tried to, to go back and forth to make sure, uh, that they had, uh, they could find a vehicle that would meet the needs of their officers, and hopefully this will be, and it'll be the first of, um, many towards, uh, improving the energy efficiency of our fleet. So, um, you know, appreciate all the effort that went into that, and the purchase, um, and appreciate that this, this board continues to focus on that in incremental steps. Um, and I think that's a good thing. And then I, I just, to reiterate what Jim McCann said at the, you know, two and a half hours ago now about, uh, COVID, um, you know, please just wear your, keep, continue to wear your mask, continue to wear your mask, continue to be smart. Um, we need to be diligent at this point. You know, people are getting vaccinated. I hope all of you get vaccinated. Um, but until, you know, we, we have enough people vaccinated, we all just have to continue to do our part and wear our masks and be, uh, cautious about, you know, the distance we keep from people, and just be smart about it. Um, so that's all I have for tonight. Be well.
Mr. Siegel.
I, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I would, I brought up what I wanted to bring up, um, at the outset with, with Jim McCann's and, and, and Dave Burman about the, the, about COVID and reaching out to those that might not have access, and so forth. And, um, I think we, we'd have to continue to be, uh, in just getting information out to, to our residents, uh, on a regular basis, and we've talked about this, but I continue to get emails almost every day from, uh, residents who have expectations that the township has some, you know, some ability to, you know, get to the governor or get more vaccines or do this or do that. And I, I keep telling folks that we really, uh, you know, it's really a federal, state, county, uh, driven process, and certainly we're going to do what we can. Uh, we're, we're doing what we can, certainly going to do what we can in terms of having vaccine sites available when and if the county calls upon us. But I think we have to be continually educating the public about this issue on, you know, on a weekly or every other week basis, so people understand that we're doing what we can do, but we're certainly, uh, limited in what we can do, and we don't have a lot of leverage, uh, to do things that people think we can do. So, anyway, I just want to continue work with Dave and, and, and Jim in getting regular updates out to people, so they understand the role that we, we, we play. Uh, you know, we'd like to play a bigger role than, than, than we're currently playing, but reality is that it's the county and state, and it's the feds, and it's the pharma companies that are making all these decisions. Um, and we're kind of sitting back watching, watching things happen, and, and unfortunately, not a lot of things are happening. So I think there's just, this growing frustration and, and anger, uh, over how, the, how poorly this has been handled by, by, uh, the federal, uh, and state governments when, you know, clearly there was going to be a vaccine come out at some point. You'd think that 10 months ago, uh, they've been working on a, on a distribution, um, process and vaccination process, but, you know, somebody, somebody or some, you know, lots of people dropped the ball here, starting with President Trump, former President Trump. So, anyway, I just want to be, you know, vigilant in, in doing what we can, get, at least at a minimum, get information out to people, uh, uh, honest information about, you know, where we stand. So, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, um, just a reminder to all of us, um, as we continue to face more bad weather, keep an eye on your neighbors, um, see what you can do to help people dig out. Um, thank you to, to our Public Works Department who worked as hard as they have. Um, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Wexler?
Yes, thank you. I'd also like to offer my thanks and congratulations to Public Works. Uh, they did a great job with the snow, but people forget, they turn around the next morning and picked up your trash. Um, they're, they work as hard with less compensation and less glory than our police department, our fire departments, our EMS people. It's, it's really a hats-off exercise to them. People forget they were working 12, 14 hours a day, and then our trash still got picked up a day later. So you, you can't beat the service that we get, you can't beat the people that we have, you can't beat the leaders that they have at the supervisor and the team management level and here at the township. So hats off to all those people. The second thing I'd like to do is congratulate and thank the Hilltop Civic Association, Association, which covers my area, not only for the little things that civic associations do, uh, like the Christmas light contest and keeping things going, trying to be, keep our neighborhoods and some of the fun things as normal as possible under the conditions that we have. But also, as some people pointed out, they are helping seniors. They've got people that are working with their neighbors, senior citizens marrying up, getting them on the list, both the Chester County, uh, and the Delaware County combined list, as well as other lists, getting them to sign up for mainline organization charts. So my hats are off to the, to the Hilltop Civic Association, who I know three or four ladies have gone, and they are helping senior citizens and reaching out to the church groups and some of their neighbors, and volunteering their time to fill out forms, get them on computers, and please solicit the other civic associations to provide the same level of help to all our neighbors in all our different little neighborhoods. We're, we're conglomeration of neighborhoods. Uh, those civic associations are great tools, and they're great people. So thank you to all the work that they've done, especially in my neighborhood, in the on air section of the township and Pilgrim Garden section. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, I too would like to, uh, thank the Public Works. They did a great, great job. They got a few, few, few calls about some court, or, or, uh, some corner homes where the, I'm sure you all got calls like this, where the snow stats stacks up a lot, and they were saying that they were, that, that they didn't know how they were going to shut public out, so I said they could give it a day or so. But, um, and then, uh, the other thing I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, or to, uh, congratulate the chief, thrilled that, um, you're going to be, be here more. And, um, then I'd like to tell a story, sorry about Jean Dolan. I think it was the first week or two since I was able to drive. I got, oh, oh, my license, and it was over in the third ward. I went through a stop sign that I didn't see, and who was, uh, the officer that stopped, stopped me, Jean Dolan. So I'm thrilled that he's, uh, up there now, so.
Did he tase you?
Did you get a ticket?
Yeah, and no longer, you know, doing traffic.
I heard you got tased.
Yeah, so, well, thank you.
Thank you. Um, it's been a long night. I, I also want to join my colleagues in thanking the Public Works for the tremendous job they did, and congratulate Chief Viola, uh, for the well-earned renewal of his contract. Um, I'm going to agree with Mr. Holmes that I think we are moving towards, um, demolition of the school, that, that is the most likely, um, outcome at this point, but I will disagree that I'm certainly, until we vote on that, willing to listen to, uh, other proposals. And that's all I have. I have a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I've adjourned.